Okay, well, let's get started. Where's my agenda? So I'll convene the work session of the Oregon City Commission to order for Monday, July 17, 2017. It's about 5:35. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Here.
Commissioner Iad?
Here.
Commissioner Mingleberg and Commissioner O'Donnell are absent this evening. Mayor Holliday?
Here. Anybody have future agenda items?
No.
Okay. Then we'll move on to 3A, 17-405, proposal to proceed with submission of permits in construction of the annex building in Mount Pleasant's tourway.
Thank you very much. And joining me this evening will be Zach Stokes from ZCS Engineering in Oregon City. Good evening. It's been a long road, so we're happy to be here to present the plans to you for the relocation development department to the Mount Pleasant Annex. We'll go over some of the history, but as you know, we are currently located at 221 Malala Avenue, and we're in a lease. It was a 10-year lease, and that lease expires on April 21 of next year. So that space is a little over 5,000 square feet, and we were trying to find a permanent location to move to. The city commission had approved us researching the annex, and at which point we hired ZCS to do a preliminary estimate to just see if the building was in good shape. And Zach can tell you a little bit about what they found.
We looked at the existing building, and it is, it's got good bones, effectively. It's a light timber-framed building. It hasn't been maintained such that everything's in perfect condition. The roof needs replaced. There's issues with the siding and fascias and things of that nature. The heating and ventilation system is old, but it's been maintained. There's a new boiler in it, and there's a lot of electrical service because of the prior uses of the building. But it is in good shape. The structure itself is about the correct size for the relocation. And realistically, with the amount of money that's available for construction, it's a feasible move to make the adjustments that are needed to accommodate the community development department in that space.
We budgeted in the next, during this budget cycle, for an amount of a little over a million dollars between the planning and building departments, and we split that budget, 60 percent building, 40 percent planning, based off our numbers of employees. And with that, we anticipated construction at Mount Pleasant Annex. Here is a screenshot of the site today. A little bit of history on the annex building itself. So it was originally constructed with, as four classrooms. At some point after that, the school district utilized the site for a...
Actually, it was originally constructed for the ASD, I believe.
Yes, so it's had a, it's had a history, which is a good thing. There was, back when printing shops were a thing, it was a printing shop, so it's got this crazy HVAC system in there. So there was some admin offices and some print shops in there as well. But it always kind of maintained this four-classroom configuration throughout time. So the, we're going to look at a, some befores, and hopefully a picture of what we anticipate the after to be. Throughout this process, we've been working with ZCS Engineering, who we hired as a consultant, to come up with a plan to how to best utilize the site and have an efficient use of our funds that are available. On this before picture, the aerial photo that's a bit clearer or zoomed in is from a few years back. It's 2012, but it's easier to see without the trees in the way. At that time, the school district had just done some minor touches to the parking lot and put in that fence, and they did some changes to the circulation of the site. So, but this is generally the layout today. And so the building is here, there's entryways at this point, and at this point. This point obviously faces the intersection where there's anticipated to be a roundabout in their transportation system plan. We don't know exactly what the design of the roundabout will be, but it's likely to take out a lot of this parking lot there. For the configuration of the site, you enter here, and then you can loop around and exit, or you can come in and then go this way and then out this way. There's no other ways to get in the site except for right there, for this parking lot. What we anticipate doing is this, which looks very similar to the image I just showed you, because again, we're trying to use our money wisely and do light touches where we can. Some major differences include a picnic bench, a little bit of landscaping here and here. Again, we know that there's going to be a roundabout at some point, so we're trying not to invest too heavily to anything on this point. An extension of a sidewalk, and then a bike rack or two. So there's really not a lot of changes to the site circulation itself. We anticipate using this front lot, because the, we would like our buildings to face the street and the corners, so we're considering this the front. So we will use this lot for staff parking only, because you have to kind of go on this little side way to get there. So visitors will come into the site, and then there's this nice parking lot here, and then they'll be able to leave. So the extent of our work is kind of going to be here. So we'll take this parking here, and then this parking and back as well.
Laura, would you take questions now, or you're waiting to leave?
Oh, yes. So anytime, give us comments, questions. We're about at 30 percent design, so it's a great time to influence.
Okay. If we know the, do we know what the estimated time for the roundabout is, John, by chance, or?
Shorter answer is no.
Okay.
But we've, you're good with that? We do want to get started with the design phase, so we can start lining up property acquisition needs.
Yeah.
And so we're going to, we'll budget to do that this year. But construction is, it's an unfunded project right now, so we would have, really kind of lining up for maybe a future grant application, and then to help, help our friends at PD, so they'll know what kind of requirements they might be in for when they bring their project forward.
So to follow that, then, should the roundabout become true at some point, then would you anticipate using this green space off to the left of the building to, to, if it ate up parking, would that become parking?
We anticipate if the school changes to a different use, say maybe a police station, that all of this will probably change. So there'll be a lot of changes on that side in the long run.
Chief Ben, right now, we have Merrill Hirst Elementary, and they, we've just extended them one more year, correct?
Yeah.
To the facility?
So June of 19 is when their lease is up.
So at some point, once that lease is up, that does open up some of that school parking as well.
So you're talking about the, not the annex building, but that other little additional school building, right?
This, yes.
Yes, that's what they're using right now.
This first one at the bottom.
They're using all of it.
One with the star on it is the annex building?
Right.
That we're using. So then everything above that, the old Mount Pleasant, they're using that facility.
They're using the entire building?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And we've run the parking calculations in accordance with our code, and we both fit at the same time together. Honestly, it's, they'll pay to mow the lawn, and so that's one less thing that I have to pay for, so that's good from that sense.
One more question?
Hmm.
You said that the, the front of the building was on the, on the side that's going to be in front of the roundabout.
Yep.
So that, you're thinking that that's where you want the entrance to be, where people have to walk around the building to get in, or can they get in the backside, or?
Great question. So there's two things going on. One is that our code requires buildings face the street and not the parking lot. The second thing is that the design of the building, oh, I'm skipping ahead. The design of the building includes a central corridor, so it's good either way. There'll be an entryway door at either end. The main facade is really just a higher architectural element, so a bit of some, some work on the roof, which I'll show you in just a second. But for all intents and purposes, for the functionality, it really works perfect for this building, since there's a central corridor, and then inside it will be, kind of be the same. Since we're not doing any major remodels, it's really, on the big-picture scheme of things, there's some complicated planning that needs to be done, but we're really just doing a minor tenant improvement with new siding, new roof, and a couple other little things, but for the most part, in the general scope of construction projects, it's not, it's relatively minor.
Okay.
Okay, so moving forward, here's the building today. So we, those two sides we talked about. This one, we're calling the front faces, facing facade, which is the one that faces the intersection, and here's the back. There's a little ADA ramp around the side. Pretty simple building, but very useful. This is what we anticipate moving forward with. Again, we're at 30 percent design, maybe the colors change and some things change, but the general idea is the direction that we're heading. And that's where I wanted to make sure that you are supportive of that direction before we move off into construction and submission of permits. We are looking at doing this change to the entrance. So the existing entrance right now looks like this. So the change will look like this. So the roof structure will come up a bit. Zach can talk about it a little bit.
Yeah, so as Laura was saying, to emphasize the front of the building being facing the street, we've created that canopy. It is going to get into the structure a little bit. We haven't detailed out exactly how that's going to work, but we're confident that we can find a way that's not going to be terribly expensive. What we've tried to do is replace the siding and, and give the spaces that need them a lot of windows within the perimeter, so that we use as much of the existing structure as we can and be economical with the ways that we touch the building. As far as siding packages and fenstration details are concerned, we're talking about a lot of cement panel. Hardy is a product that's thrown around a lot, but not just the lap siding that you'd see on a residence, some of the cement panel, and aluminum storefront windows. So it has more of a commercial look than, rather than residential. We've also thrown in some wood detailing on the soffit of the, of the new canopy and at the entrance there to highlight that as the entrance. Otherwise, the exterior of the building really stays the same. We're going to do some, some sheer wall work, because we're going to be cutting in new windows. All that'll be brought up to code effectively. When we go in and alter holes in walls, we have to make sure that the building's going to stand up to code earthquake events. So we'll be doing that, replacing the roof. You can, you can see the roof, because it's flat and relatively low from the adjacent streets. That'll be an improvement visually, and, and that's about it from the exterior.
And we're showing you the Lynn Avenue side and then the front side. We're not showing you the other two sides, because there's not really a lot anticipated there. There may be some little stuff, but really not too much. We're going to be smart with our money and focus on the sides that face the street.
Where's the flagpole?
Uh, would you like a flagpole?
City building needs a flagpole.
Oh. Yeah.
Which is something I was going to talk to you about.
Look at him.
Is it the end of the Oregon Trail, does it have one?
I will make a note. Or would you like one closer with the, the police facility when that's built, or one at E beach?
No, they're going to be different facilities.
All right, I will write it down.
That little building that's on top, is that a skylight? What is that?
That's a mechanical loft. So right now, the, a mechanical loft?
Mezzanine.
Yeah. So right now, you go into a closet and walk up a bunch of stairs into that little room, and that's where all the mechanical equipment is housed. And then the ducting comes throughout the building from that.
Adds a little character.
Yeah, it adds another dimension.
It's better than looking at a big rooftop HVAC unit, basically.
Yes.
Now that we saw the inside, oh, here's more detail on the front. Again, we talked about that wood paneling, first signage. We're thinking some signage right there on the building, just some metal letters. We're going to keep it simple. This is that general layout, so that main corridor as it exists today, and then there's a couple of classrooms and a gym. Here's some pictures of what that corridor looks like. In order to be fiscally responsible, there's a lot of things that we're not doing. So this is the existing restroom. We're going to keep it, because it works, and it's not falling apart or anything like that. So if it works and it's not broken, we're going to kind of keep it and make sure that we spend our money in other places.
And if I can cut in, and if it works with the building program. There's things that we are changing that, that don't fit effectively the building program and what the community development department needs. But we've spent a lot of time working through it with them to make sure that what we keep is, is not just what's working now, but is going to continue to work in the future.
So this is not something that's going to interfere when we build the new police station? They're still going to stay here?
Yes.
Okay.
And then here's just some screenshots of the classrooms.
Laura, her staff are still going to be here?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
After we build the police station. There we go. Okay, sorry.
No, no problem. And with no lease, too, so that's good. Very helpful to our budget. Here's one of the classrooms. Here's a picture of another classroom. There's a picture of the casework, because again, if it's not broken, we're not going to fix it. And so what we're hoping to do is utilize this building for the assets that it has. So it's got casework. There's a couple places you'll see in the next design that we want to keep that casework, because it's already in. So large unused spaces, high ceilings in the middle, they shed down towards the sides, which is why on the side of the building, you saw the big windows in the middle to help provide natural light throughout the space. Here's the gym, pretty self-explanatory. So this is that one side where there is essentially a break in that wall, so it's one larger room rather than two smaller. We, here's the design of the existing facility. Notice, there's a lot of bathrooms in here. There's a bathroom here, a bathroom here, three stalls here, three stalls there, and the classrooms. And then here's all that other stuff, mechanical room, custodian room, a teacher conference room, and then a data room. So how we hope to utilize the site is to get rid of these two bathrooms in the middle, and then dedicate that space towards the gym for police department. This is a really, I think, wonderful feature of this building, because it allows us to grow over time, should the gym ever relocate. The size that's dedicated towards community development is about the size we're in right now, so that works out perfectly. We're going to try and minimize taking out walls and doing unnecessary things. So that's where you'll see a lot of these lines. So the hallway right now is right here, the entranceway's right there, so we're keeping the bigger pieces in play. This'll be our lobby with chairs. There'll be a front counter here, and then you can go back into the back area where all of our staff will be housed. We are taking all of our existing cubicles, so that is very helpful for our budget. The flip side of that is, we're going to have to think through very carefully the timing, because we have to pull out those cubicles, and they have electricity running through them, reinstall them, and then move in. So we'll kind of have to think about what that transition move looks like.
Sounds like a long weekend.
Yeah. It does, it does. Then there's a copy room here. So essentially, this is where all the offices are. There'll be a small conference room here. It's a little bit larger than our existing small conference room. And then there's a large conference room over here, which is a little bit larger than our existing conference room. There's a lunch room. Pretty simple. Any comments or questions on the design?
So the gym, I'm unclear on what that's going to be, going to continue to be a gym?
Yep. We are going to take about this square footage away from the gym, and then we'll take out the bathrooms, and that will join the gym square footage, but it will stay a gym until it's no longer a gym, and I don't know when that will be.
So who's using the gym?
The police department uses it for training as well as physical fitness. So there's a lot of training that happens in that space.
Okay.
So they need those large, wide-open spaces. So we couldn't, we couldn't take too much of it away.
Is it anticipated that when, if and when the building is built for the PD, that the gym would move over to that building?
Yes.
And then that will leave us with a large, empty space, so...
To grow.
To grow, which is just phenomenal. Yeah. And then also during construction, since they'll still be using it for training while or during construction, essentially, we're going to throw up this wall here and then do a little demo there. That won't actually take that long, so they can still keep using the gym. They have their own door, so it's really nice, because it's so separate that we can do all of our stuff here while they're still using the facility.
What's the square footage of the whole building?
A little over 7,000.
Okay.
Those complicated planning applications include a zone change, a comprehensive plan amendment, and then a minor site plan designer view. Note that we are doing a zone change comprehensive plan amendment with a trip cap, which means we're figuring out how many automobile trips the school was using when it was a school. And then we're, we are saying for the annex, for the site, we're not going to use any more than they're already having right now. So we're not, should any large development occur on-site in the future, you may have to go back and amend these planning applications to allow more transportation to be on-site. From my understanding, the annex covers planning's needs, the school covers the police department needs. So we would, we don't anticipate opening that up, even if there is a police facility or court facility in the near future.
Okay.
Next step, submit an application. We wanted to run this by you again. I have your comment about the flagpole. Is there any other comments or questions or concerns?
So I'm still having a little issue with us putting all the money into the front of that building, even though it's not, we anticipate people using that as the front. They're going to have, because that parking's going to be gone at some point in time.
Yeah.
So are they going to be coming around to that, or do you think they're going to be using the back?
They'll be...
So your signage, you're going to say, this is where to enter at, even though this is the front of the building?
Yeah, and it, one thing was important was to practice what we preach, and since we have requirements for this in our code, if we were going to do anything to the building, we want to make sure that we do that. It's always nice to be outside our facility, and when we tell people they need landscape areas in their parking lot, we can say, just like outside here, and they understand what it is, and we are practicing what we preach. So yeah, the, it'll be that architectural design that faces the intersection, but when you come in the parking lot, you're really going in through the other door anyway. And they're somewhat similar, it's just that roof pitch is different, and then that wood is a little bit different.
And there'll still be signage on the backside, right?
Yep.
Okay.
There'll still be signage on both sides.
So when I saw the million-dollar price tag on that, I was a little alarmed, but I'm kind of in the business, so, but you're talking about reusing quite a bit of things, you're moving some bathrooms and stuff, but, so I'll be interested to see how the, what the costs look like when they actually come in and stuff, so.
They're very expensive.
I know. So the seismic is included in that million-dollar estimate, right, Zach?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, because that can be a big deal right there.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. What we're dealing with is a relatively light building that's rectangular. We don't have big, heavy concrete walls. We don't have a really narrow building or a really tall building. Really, it's, it's a glorified house.
Yeah.
It's a glorified, really big house. So the seismic components of it are, it's something that we're including, but it's not something that is going to be particularly expensive for this building.
You know, one, one thing I'll throw in, as we've talked about price, that's important to remember about using this annex in terms of the million dollars. Oh, that's a lot of money if this is something that, that some people, so this is not a temporary building in that in three years, this thing isn't coming down. If you think about if a police department gets built in the next five years...
When?
I hope so. But, but even, even if that is a go, then if you look at the time that it's going to take to, to pay for that, you're, you get into 15, 20 years before there's some, you know, we've all seen long-term plans for this site. So when you look at this building, I mean, to make it to where it's usable and looks good for 15, 20-plus years, it's, it's, it's still a really good deal.
Pales in comparison to what we spent on the Irma Tinger House.
And to that end, a few times, our rent by seven and a half years, that's about a million bucks, too. And the million dollars includes hard costs and soft costs, so it's including consultants.
So with good, regular maintenance, would you anticipate this building could last 50 Given that we have homes in Oregon City that are well over 100 years?
Yeah, I guess that's what I was thinking, is given what it is, yes. Good, regular maintenance is what becomes the question. This building was built in, I believe, the 70s. In the recent past, it hasn't had good, regular maintenance. It needs new siding, it needs a new roof. Those things are costs that are going to continue to come up, but if those things are done...
Properly maintained.
And properly maintained, then yeah, I don't see any reason why it couldn't.
Okay. So the, excuse me, the final question is, from me anyways, have you worked out a lease agreement with the, with Chief Ben to use that gym?
Yeah, I really...
You need a bigger calculator.
No, thank you. I did want to thank Chief Ben very much for helping us through this process, and we received a lot of plans that he had received when we purchased the property. We've also worked quite a bit with Wes Rogers at the school district. He allowed us to go to their office and go through all of their old plans, so we found a lot of valuable information that ended up saving us a bunch of money through this plan phase.
So that's how you get around having, not to have him lease from you? Because he provided all of that. That's good.
I hadn't thought about charging him rent for the gym.
That's what I'm saying, that's where I'm going with this, to help you out a little bit.
It's a bit like taking a quarter out of your right pocket and putting it in your left pocket.
No, no. No, keep talking, this is good.
I do have one last question from me. Is it compatible with the, I know your plans for the police station aren't, aren't final, but you know, with the proposed plans, I mean, it's not going to like stick out like a sore thumb, you know, this building next to the nice new police station.
We hope so. There are a couple of drawings of the proposed police station that we used as inspiration. A lot of it had glass, which is kind of expensive, so that's why we tried to load up the windows on Lynn Avenue. And yeah, so our cues have been taken from that building. It won't look exactly the same, but we hope to get in the same color family and also buffer with landscaping and things like that, so it's more of a cohesive site at some point.
You look back, too, at the concept designs. So there was a Phase 1 and a Phase 2 that we originally done, and those are just designs. The Phase 1 has this same footprint, the, the parking in Phase 1 was all designed to accommodate both this and what would most likely be the position of a new police department on the site. So it's, it's already kind of worked into our plan that, we, we planned to use this somehow for the city from the start.
Well, and you might consider just as, what's the term I'm looking for? Architectural accent. Remember that the entire site right now is built out of, or the great majority is built out of brick, so some kind of brick accents on this building, you know, to tie it back into the Mount Pleasant School kind of feel. Because I know Jim is talking about using some of the brick that comes down out of the school, so just a suggestion.
Yeah, and I did, the school district's willing to loan us a big mural that their kids had made for the Mount Pleasant School, there's artwork on the inside, so there'll be some nods.
Okay. All right, anything else?
No.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Next up, Clackamas Cove Water Quality and Habitat Improvement Feasibility Study, Mr. Lewis.
Mr. John Lewis. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for taking the time to have this extra meeting for us, so we could present a couple of items tonight. And this one is, first one, John, if you want to step up here. I'm going to introduce John Runyon. He's with Cascade Environmental Group. They're a Portland-based firm that we've hired to look at the Cove area, and he's extensively familiar with the Cove. He was before he looked at it, and he's even more familiar now. He's, Cascade Environmental Services focuses on watershed assessment and stream habitat inventories, wetland delineation, riparian assessment, environmental mitigation strategies, site development, stream and wetland restoration, project planning, design, construction, and monitoring, and local, state, and federal permitting and compliance. So the reason John came to us was, actually, I think he had been spending some time with Ed Darrow, really, who was looking at the Cove development, looking for innovative ways to further expand on, on improvements to the Cove, to the environment around the Cove. And so John comes with lots of experience, in fact, 25 years' experience doing all those things that I listed under Cascade Environmental Work. And he's currently working with Clackamas River Basin Council, the Greater Oregon City Watership... the Greater Oregon City Watershed Council, Metro, ODFW, Clackamas County, and other organizations on restoration strategy for recovering salmon, steelhead, and other native fish populations over an area that encompasses the Clackamas River and other tributaries, including Abernathy and Johnson Creek. John has a BA in Biology, um, and he, from the, um, Oregon State University, so go Beavs. Um, uh, MS in Environmental Policy with the University of Oregon, so go Ducks.
Got it all.
And MS in Forestry and Landscape Ecology, from, back to Oregon State University. So I'm not sure in which order, but I'm, I, I didn't really ask him who he really votes for when the games go on.
I'm a platypus, but I go for the beavers.
Okay, so there you go. Um, so, uh, we asked John to try to keep it to fifteen minutes, and so I'm just gonna let him go with that introduction.
Thank you, John. Um, I guess first, uh, just sort of to lay out the context here, when I started on this project, um, the intent was to analyze the Cove in the setting that it, it's in, in terms of the rivers, the habitats, and surrounding land uses. I did not, I did not specifically evaluate the proposed development out there for two reasons. One, I wanted to keep the focus more broad, broadly, on, um, surrounding land uses and habitats. And the second reason was that the, quite frankly, the development was still in a lot of flux in terms of where it was gonna go with proposals and that sort of thing. Um, so, uh, with that, um, Clackamas Cove, uh, obviously is an old gravel pit, uh, and that presents some challenges, um, because of the topography and the industrial land uses, uh, surrounding it. Uh, I think you're all familiar with the, the variety of land uses there, including the old landfill, um, of course, the, the, um, facility that was there for the sand and gravel operation, had an offloading facility. There's a lot of, um, um, I guess, legacy that comes with that, uh, for the site. One of the big issues that drove the feasibility analysis was looking at water quality, and one of the key water quality concerns are the harmful algae blooms. And, uh, I learned a new acronym out of this, HABs. And, uh, this is something that occurs throughout the world, uh, it's, it's, it's really an increasing issue, particularly where you have river systems that, um, uh, essentially create, uh, stillwater lake areas within them. And that's what Clackamas Cove has created. You've got, obviously, the Clackamas River, which moves along at a certain velocity, but you then have this old gravel pit that is essentially a lake there, and whenever you have still water like that, it allows the algae blooms to really form. That algae's there all the time, it's in the Clackamas River, it's in the Willamette River, but because both those systems are moving along, you don't get the, uh, colescing blooms. One other area that's a good analog to Clackamas Cove is, um, uh, within the city of Portland and, um, the, um, lagoon there, Ross Island, that has similar issues, and, um, we're, uh, kind of jointly looking at those kinds of issues, both in the lagoon and Clackamas Cove, because they, they seem to be interrelated, and they're driven by some of the same things, namely, um, slow-moving water and high-water temperatures. Uh, this is just a quick rundown of the issues with the harmful algae blooms. Um, they often reach a point where Oregon Health Authority will, uh, put out an advisory, uh, recommending that there be no water contact activities because of the blooms, uh, and there's good reasons for that. Uh, the, the algae produce a, a toxin, a liver toxin, which for, uh, humans can be, um, usually not fatal, but it can lead to skin rashes and real issues. Uh, for animals, particularly dogs, it can be fatal, uh, and I know of a couple of instances in Ross Island area where there were dogs that went in, licked their fur, uh, and, uh, then died after that. So it is a real issue. Um, you've had one closure, uh, which was in 2015. That, to remind you, that summer was extremely hot, the winter was very dry, there wasn't much snowpack, so the river was very, very low. By June, it was basically at August, September levels, and there were very high-water temperatures. You had at that, that year, uh, a closure, the first one. There was also a closure in Ross Island, um, and there was a, a closure the previous year in Ross Island. Uh, last year, uh, there was not a closure of Clackamas Cove. There was, um, uh, some warnings that were put out, just alerting folks that there could be issues with the bloom, but there was no closure, but there was a closure on Ross Island. So this is more than just Clackamas Cove, it's, it's a regional issue. Um, as I said, uh, one of the big issues out there is, uh, the fact that it's an old industrial site, so there's a lot of debris, both rubble, old asphalt, old infrastructure that's there. I know some of it's being removed as part of the current development, but there's a tremendous amount of material that's out there surrounding the area. Uh, and it's an aesthetic issue, obviously, the algae blooms are also an aesthetic issue, but it's also a recreational issue and a safety, uh, problem. One of the other safety issues, and it's kind of illustrated here, I'm sorry, when you, um, look at, uh, the topography of the site, and this is a topographic image here showing the contour lines, you have extremely steep banks, and those steep banks continue into the water, um, and that's a, that's actually a hazard. If, if someone was to fall in right there, it immediately drops into deeper water. Uh, and in most areas where they've restored, uh, gravel pits, uh, for more public uses and recreational uses, they try to shallow out those areas, create wetlands along there, both for habitat, but also importantly for safety, so you don't have that sudden drop-off. Uh, just looking at the topography there, just to reinforce the, the sudden drop-off into the area, it's not a, a, a super-deep system, it's not like Ross Island where it's almost two-hundred feet deep. Here, during the summer, uh, maximum depths are around twenty feet, um, uh, and of course, it fluctuates with the water levels through the years, but that's sort of the, the minimum-maximum depth that you have in low-water periods in the summer. Um, so that's really important to understand, and that's why it heats up so much, because it's not a huge volume of water, but it also presents an opportunity to, to, to help mitigate for the algae blooms, because it's not a huge body of water. If you get some flow in there, it's an opportunity to potentially, um, uh, eliminate or at least reduce the incidence of algae blooms, because th- those critters just don't like any kind of velocity, even very slow velocity.
So are we talking about actually making a connection between the Cove and the Clackamas?
That is one of the things that we explored with this, and, um, we feel, based on our initial ex- exploration, that, that it potentially is feasible. It'll require more engineering study to, uh, drill into the details, but that's something that, um, uh, through this study, we recommended that the city pursue, uh, evaluating that in more detail.
I mean, several years ago, probably ten or fifteen years ago, we had to actually rip-rep a piece of that to keep it from actually...
Evulsing in?
Yeah.
Exactly. Uh, and what we would recommend looking at is something that would not allow an evulsive event, but probably an engineered channel that would channel flow in there, particularly during the critical periods in the summertime. Uh, we think it's worth evaluating. We know of other situations where they just modestly increase the flow through the stillwater systems. That was enough to really minimize the algae blooms. Uh, one of the other points that we brought up there is sort of the floodplain habitats and the vegetation there. Uh, and there's, there's a variety of vegetation ranging from, uh, areas that are primarily, um, uh, uh, you know, just kind of open rubble, like that peninsula that's there in the southwest corner, uh, to the area that's the peninsula that you just referred to, uh, Mayor, that is, um, actually the highest-quality habitat out there in terms of the, um, overstory vegetation. There's a lot of understory, blackberry, uh, invasives and that sort of thing that needs to be cleaned up, but in talking to ODFW and other experts, they see that as a key habitat area, uh, for wildlife, et cetera. And they actually recommend that, um, one of the strategies there is to have it as a habitat area, don't have trails out there. The trail there is an issue, I know, with, with homeless folks, transients out there. It's, 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 they're very steep banks, so it's actually dangerous to go out there. So the, one of the recommendations was to really emphasize habitat there, maybe reduce human, um, access into that area, uh, and, and, uh, restore it, you know, focusing on the understory, that sort of thing. Uh, the other area, the, the, uh, the peninsula that's on the, um, sort of the northwest side, uh, has pretty good vegetation where the old, that's kind of where the old, um, uh, water withdrawal facility is for the city of Gladstone, which is actually outside of the property, but worth investigating potentially to bring into it. Uh, there's real opportunities to, to enhance that. But the bottom line is, um, recreation is not controlled out there, so you have just unimproved, uh, casual trails that extend throughout the area. You've got issues of trash, um, and, and as I said, the safety issues, too. So right now, it's a free-for-all with recreation, and that has impacts on the habitat, too. So one of the big conclusions of, of our study is it's an importantly, it's a regionally important habitat area. The confluence of the Clackamas and the Willamette has been recognized by the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board, ODFW, and others as really an important habitat area, because, um, one, uh, it's, it's important habitat in itself, and two, it's, um, essentially the gateway into the Clackamas River and some of the most robust salmon and steelhead runs, uh, frankly, in the northwest. Uh, if you think about it, and I'll be a little visionary here, um, Oregon City's really at a strategic location. You're at the, uh, right at the, the mouth of the, uh, Clackamas River. You're also obviously right at Willamette Falls, and, and to my biologist's mind, that's the gateway to some of the strongest salmon runs, both of those in the, in the, um, Pacific Northwest, and they're important habitat areas. And I think you're, you're now working on Willamette Falls and the legacy project there, playing that up as a public, uh, amenity, uh, and, and, um, the city amenity. I think there are real opportunities to do that in Clackamas Cove, but also in Clackamas Park, too. Uh, and tie those together, you're really at the gateway to, to, uh, incredible salmon runs, as I said. But there's real issues there, uh, mainly because you've created a stillwater environment, so there's, there's, there's the, um, water quality issues, there's also the issues with, um, just the fact that you've got the steep banks and all of that, um, that you need to address. Um, this gets to that, that issue that we were just talking about with the idea of an engineered channel. Um, there are other, um, uh, things that might complement that, uh, if you can increase flows in there, you can minimize algae blooms, but the other parts of it are, um, looking perhaps at some, uh, creating wetlands out there. Floating wetlands are kind of an out-of-the-box idea, they've actually been applied in other areas, but creating wetlands both reduces the volume, so you have less heating, they also absorb nutrients, and nutrients are part of the algae bloom issue. Uh, improving stormwater quality into the system, too, and I've actually had some initial discussions with city staff about opportunities to retrofit some of the stormwater outfalls that come into the Cove, probably upstream retrofits that would reduce both the, the volume and, and improve the quality of stormwater coming in there. The reason, um, I, I focus on stormwater is, uh, if you're gonna do any kind of habitat improvements out there for fish and wildlife, uh, you have opportunities to get grant funding, that sort of thing for it, but any grantor and the agencies that would permit those sort of things would look at the stormwater issues and would look at, um, the, the city's approach to that, and I think getting ahead of the curve and having sort of a visionary approach where you're trying to reduce those inputs and improve the quality over time is, is really important.
Question. So what is a floating wetland?
Floating wetlands are, uh, essentially, they're on a platform, you know, on the surface...
Like a floating green?
Well, I suppose you could use it that way, too, uh, so other recreational opportunities. Um, but they essentially allow the plants to have the root system come down into the water, they absorb nutrients, and they shade the water, too. Um, uh, and they can be very attractive. Uh, when you look out there right now, you just have those steep banks, um, uh, having, uh, some diversity out there with, with wetlands, both along the sides, potentially floating wetlands, could really improve the area. Um, let's face it, it's, it's, it's really a recreational asset, and you wanna think about recreational things and aesthetic things. Um, by improving habitat, you both improve the, the, just the water recreational activities, but you also improve potentially recreational activities along the edges, bird watching, all those kinds of things.
So let me follow up on that, then. So if we somehow prevent human access to the, the peninsula... Well, yeah, but if we were to do that, how does that affect, uh, wildlife? Because I, I know we got deer and elk, well, not elk so much, but we got a ton of deer here.
Right.
You know, I see them in my backyard. I had a five-point buck in my yard earlier this spring, so, um, and I'm certain that some of those kinds of critters live down there. If we somehow fence that off, how does that function? How do we prevent people from being down there without also stopping the critters?
Um, well, there are ways that you can allow, you know, critters to get in there. Um, stopping people is a challenge, any way you look at it, but signage and all those kinds of things can help in just enforcing it. Uh, but I think that's, you know, a strategy that would have to be developed. Part of it is focusing recreation in other areas, allowing other access points that are, uh, developed and signed, um, and there are plenty of examples of that, of other gravel pits where they develop recreational amenities that really draw people in and, um, will reduce impacts on those other areas. So there's softer approach.
Yes.
The other opportunities out there are the potential for creating, um, a, a mitigation bank by creating wetlands on the site, uh, and that could function as a wetland mitigation bank for potentially city projects, potentially for selling credits for other projects that would happen, uh, within the, uh, Clackamas Basin, because usually the area is within a particular watershed or basin. Um, that's something to explore. I think, uh, I think it's something that would help with, um, uh, some of the financial aspects of the project, because you could generate revenue off of a mitigation bank there, and get high-quality habitat out of it at the same time. Uh, so one of the areas that we recommended looking at in more detail. Um, the other is to address the steep banks. Uh, steep banks are a real issue there, they're a safety hazard, uh, they're, they're, they're not, uh, something good to look at, and the opportunities there are twofold. One is to bring some of the banks back, uh, to, uh, less of a steep angle. The other is creating fringe wetlands along the lower portions of the bank and getting vegetation in there, uh, so it doesn't have that sudden drop-off into the water. Uh, so the wetlands are shallow, shallow water habitats. That also benefits wildlife, it really benefits fish, too. Uh, this is an example of a gravel pit where they've created, they've both brought the banks back and they've created shallow-water wetlands along the edges, um, so you can, uh, obviously improve both habitat and aesthetics. Uh, stormwater outfalls, there's a couple out there that, um, go directly into the Cove, find opportunities for upstream retrofits. As I said, I've already had some preliminary conversations with city staff about that. We think there's some opportunities upstream essentially to help reduce the quantity of stormwater that comes in. Uh, recreation, um, it's a big deal out there. Uh, it's a very popular area for open-water swimming until you get the algae blooms later in the summer, um, and you see folks out there all the time. There's, as this, uh, shows, there's been triathlons there, that sort of thing. This is an example of what I was saying about other, um, amenities that you could put there to attract people into, um, areas that you want them to play in, but not impact other habitats. This is actually a, a restored gravel pit in the city of Beaverton, um, and, uh, there, they've created a really nice area where they, uh, have shallow-water wetlands around it, they've got plantings along the edge, and then they have recreational amenities like this, where they actually have a separate water area for folks to, if they wanna wade and that sort of thing, they can go in there. Uh, and it's really a popular spot, they've got restaurants around it, it's, it's, it's really a nice analog for, I think, what you could potentially do out there.
You don't have the picture of the other side of this. I know, 'cause Commissioner I, and I actually visited this on your tour.
That's on the tour, right.
Yeah, and, uh, this, this is nice, but that other picture that shows the opposite side of this actually, uh, promotes the habitat side of that a lot more generally, so...
It does, and I, unfortunately, I don't think I have a picture of that, so... Uh, just another view of, of the, the decking there that they have.
Well, that's it right there.
Yeah.
But there, yeah, that's true, you can see that other side. And you can see it's sort of analogous, they've got that development there, and they've done a great job of vegetating that area, and vegetating it and keeping people out, so there aren't the, the informal trails or anything like that. Um, so you're really accommodating everything. You've got the habitats, you've got the development, you've got the recreational amenities.
So how do you prevent the kudzu and the blackberries and stuff from coming into that area if it's just basically wild?
Um, it's, it's not easy. What you need to do is really establish native vegetation, maintain that for a period of time, and if you do that long enough, eventually you reach a point where you can start shading out the, the other vegetation that come in. With that said, I, I have to fully acknowledge that there still will be some ongoing, you know, weed control and that sort of thing, but you can get it to a point, based on our experience working on a number of sites, where, um, uh, uh, maintenance is pretty minimal.
Okay.
So, uh, we recommended a number of next steps there, and we really think that the city should take a comprehensive, um, approach to this and look at a variety of, of, of the, uh, impacts out there, ways to improve the overall aesthetics, habitat, and recreational qualities. Investigate the stormwater, explore the engineering feasibility for connectivity to the Clackamas, and primarily to, um, control the harmful algae blooms. Uh, investigate, uh, co- funding for a comprehensive recreation plan. We think that you shouldn't piecemeal it, you need to think comprehensively about how you can have recreation out there. Integrate that in with, with Clackamas Park, integrate that in with other recreational amenities. You already have the trail that connects with, with Gladstone, you've got incredible bones there that you can build off of for recreation, but it really cries out for a comprehensive and integrated approach, uh, which can be integrated in with habitat restoration. There are opportunities there, I think, to leverage funding for both. Um, there, there are grants available, and I know from my perspective... available, and I know from my perspective, working on the recovery plan for the Clackamas system, that's going to present real opportunities to leverage funding for habitat improvements, potentially for Clackamas Cove, too. So really trying to approach it in both from recreation and habitat improvement standpoints. I've talked to John Lewis extensively about this, I think you need to establish and implement a water quality monitoring program, you need to get ahead of the curve on the HABs, they're going to occur out there, you're going to get those algae blooms. By monitoring it, you get two things, one, you're informed, you have a better sense for when it might occur, two, you have a better sense for what's causing them, because you can correlate that with water temperatures, water flow, all those kinds of things, and have a more intelligent approach to it, and third, you can show progress over time if you're addressing the issues out there with perhaps the engineered channel and other things.
Okay, Nate, you broke one of my golden rules in that, is you use an acronym that nobody knows, so what is HAB?
I'm sorry, it was actually an, earlier on, and I said this is an acronym you'll learn, it's Harmful Algae Bloom.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, and I normally don't use acronyms, so please correct me there, but, so there are opportunities, I think, for funding, and I think if you take a comprehensive approach with recreation, water quality, and habitat, that will open up real funding doors, and I say that as one who is a grant writer and is always exploring funding opportunities, and I think integrating that in with ESA recovery planning that's going on right now is something that you should seize. And there's also the mitigation banking options that potentially could provide some funding also for the areas along with habitat restoration.
Well, now, isn't the developer also counting on some of that to help out with his financing?
Honestly, I was consulting for the city on this, I haven't interfaced with Ed other than, I guess, conceptually talking about mitigation as an opportunity out there. Other than that, no, I haven't pursued it.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Is that it?
That's it for me, any other questions?
All right, so, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't-
Go ahead.
Okay. Is the Portland Harbor Fund money still available, John, for that?
They are available, it's something that my firm works on, and honestly, there really are not many new opportunities for developing mitigation through the Harbor Fund. I think the best opportunity for mitigation is for stream and wetland mitigation credits and not Portland Harbor Superfund, because I think the market there is getting saturated.
And lastly, I do want to give credit to Jerry Herman, he's the one that really kind of started this whole program of, for habitat and restoration and the water quality in that cove, so really wanted to give him credit for all of this and bringing you in here, because he was working with you on the Gladstone project over there, too, so, okay, thank you.
Is there funding, a budget, to be able to absorb this investigating, all this retrofitting and staff time, and just to be able to manage adding a project like that into your life?
Well, I think some of the things that John's mentioned with regard to, you know, mitigation funding, it sounded very promising, I'm disappointed to hear about the Portland funding not being available anymore, but, yeah, these are big projects, you start talking about some kind of an engineered channel between Clackamas River and the cove, that's a big project. We've struggled with just the idea and some of our permitting with the gravel bar removal, and while that's not necessarily shown to do a lot to enhance water quality there, it's just, those are the kind of projects that are problematic for us. So if we felt like this was a priority, we have some, I suppose, some potential to condition development to do, at least along their waterfront, and we could, definitely the stormwater enhancements upstream and downstream, I think those are manageable projects that we would want to make sure we include in our stormwater master plan, which is coming to you pretty soon, so, and Jonathan's in the audience, so I'm sure he's listening to that as well, but, yeah, those kind of projects are definitely manageable.
And one really good analog for this is City of Eugene, Delta Ponds, which I talk about a little bit in my report. There, they spent, you know, well over a million dollars through, for the studies and then the habitat enhancement, and now they have a beautiful system where they've got recreational amenities, good, better water quality, and the habitat out there. They were able to leverage a lot of funding, both from the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board, they got some U.S. Army Corps of Engineers funding, so there are pots of money out there, and there are examples, and I think the City of Eugene is a really good example.
Anything else? So, one last question, do we still have dredging permits for that gravel bar?
We have, we do have dredging permits, they're very, very small, they're not, compared to what's out there, there's, I want to say, I don't remember the number, but it's a small amount of yardage that we're permitted to remove.
Because that didn't start to appear until 96. Prior to that, there wasn't an island there. So what's the reasoning that we can't take it away?
We evaluated it, John Dvorsky, a geomorphologist, was on our team, and we looked at it, and the issue there is you have episodic events like the 1996 flood that bring material down, you also have just, in an average year, you still have material that comes down. The issue with dredging there is it would not be sustainable, and the Corps of Engineers no longer gives out a programmatic permits that allows you to come back repeatedly to dredge out, something like that. It might last, it just depends on the flood events that you have, because the bigger the flood, the more material will come down. That's a depositional environment there, the bridge restricts the channel, and so it slows down the flows, and Clackamas Cove slows down the flows also because you have that opening, it's just going to deposit material, anything you do out there, it's going to continue to deposit material.
And eventually grow trees.
It could, and then another flood comes along and just, you know, shifts it around again, yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Last one is 14, or 17407, Sewer Infiltration Abatement Program update, Mr. John Lewis once again.
So I'm going to go ahead and invite up the two consultants that are, well, they're both with Brown and Caldwell, so John Holland is with Brown and Caldwell, as is Ryan Resloff, so they have been working diligently with Jonathan Archbald, who's sitting in the audience, to help us through our infiltration and inflow abatement program, just to get the acronym right there, so our INI study. So they're going to give us a presentation on this. We've talked a little bit about length, so John, do your best, and Ryan, to keep it short. Our police chief just left, and I was certain he was very interested in this topic, so hopefully he'll come back to join us. So I don't have long introductions for both these folks, but I know John Holland longest, because he's been with Brown and Caldwell for a very long time, and used to be the city engineer for Tacoma, Washington, and he's actually been the project manager for a couple of big Lake Oswego projects, one that I'm pretty familiar with, which is the sanitary sewer floating pipe concept. There was an acronym for that one that I've forgotten, but-
Thank you.
A pretty complicated, Laura, right, wasn't it?
Lois.
Lois, yeah, Lois.
Sorry, Laura.
You're all about sewer, buddy.
So anyway, I, so anyway, I think very highly of John and Ryan, gotten to know Ryan, so they're both going to get through this and give you some information on our program. Really where I want to get to and hope the emphasis will land on is kind of next steps and some of the things that we as a city have to think about in terms of how to make our situation better. So with that.
Thanks, John. So we'll step through this pretty quickly, and if you have questions, stop us along the way, and happy to answer any at the end. So I'll go through the first three topics there, and then Ryan will tell you what we've been up to for the last year or two, delving a little deeper, and then we'll close those next steps, as John mentioned. So INI, as John mentioned, inflow and infiltration, if you've been around city government for any length of time, INI eventually comes up as a problematic topic. It's the result of direct connections, that's the inflow part of stormwater to the sanitary sewer system. The infiltration part is indirect connections, and we call it groundwater typically, but it can be rapidly percolating surface water that gets in through cracks and breaks and joints for pipes that might have been there 50 years ago when the pipe was built that are no longer there. Private property sources generally account for about half of a total inflow and infiltration in a system, and just to give you an idea of the difficulty of, and the challenge of dealing with INI, and in terms of sealing up some of these defects and trying to stop leaks, sewer systems are backfilled with sandy gravel material, and they're bedded in sandy gravel material, so water flows very easily through that, so your entire sewer system is basically this network of pervious material, and if you seal up the leak in one spot, it can move and get into another spot. So when we talk about really trying to make major headway on INI, we're talking about taking kind of a basin approach rather than a piecemeal approach. So the need for INI reduction, there's, you could categorize it in a couple of ways. Conveying and treating it can be expensive, you might have to upsize pipes, I know that you've done a little bit of that, certainly costs for treating that excess flow come back to you in the form of, you know, your arrangement with Water Environment Services, and it can get worse when you actually exceed the capacity of treatment facilities and major new capital upgrades are needed. Locally, it can have the impacts, of course, you've had moratoriums in the past where capacity has exceeded and you really can't accommodate new connections without overflows, you may have overflows in some places or backups during the worst storm events without any new development. And then the third thing that goes on, again, kind of from a local perspective, is that when water moves through the bedding and backfill material and gets into a pipe, it's moving soil and that sandy, you know, the fine material with it, and that creates voids. Those voids then lead to a loss of support for the pipe, and that can accelerate the entire process so that joints open up, more water gets in, more material is moved, that's what causes sinkholes in city streets that you see occasionally on the news, is that whole process. But before that ever happens, it's causing the pipes to open up, and that accelerates a structural deterioration because they're not as able to resist the load of the backfill. So the objectives for virtually every INI program is to remove what we call the cost-effective portion, and so that, the term cost-effective in this instance has to do with the INI that's more economically removed than conveyed and treated at the plant. So you can't, and no city can possibly afford to remove all of its INI. The problem is far too big, it's at every pipe joint in the sewer mains, it's at every pipe joint in the, in all of the service laterals to every building. So we want to focus and prioritize that work on the leakiest basins, and we've done some work to identify where the leakiest basins in the city are. Direct inflow sources, those are pretty readily removed at, you know, a much smaller cost than some of the infiltration defects. Private property, I mentioned, half of the problem is on private property, so, you know, most cities that have any success with INI reduction in any significant way have developed policies for dealing with INI on private property.
Such as?
Well, first of all, recognizing that they are going to go after it, and then the question generally becomes, who's paying for it? Is it put on the individual private property owner, or is it viewed as a citywide benefit to all ratepayers and funded by the, by all ratepayer funds or the wastewater utility?
But I'm still confused about what the actual fix is.
So the fix would be generally a trenchless liner of some sort inserted into the existing pipe, or dig and replace the pipe, and the decision between those two is a function of what kind of condition the pipe is in.
Okay.
Okay. And really importantly, when we're trying to figure out what's cost-effective with INI reduction, is to consider the dual benefit of addressing sewers that are nearing the end of their useful life from a structural perspective.
Like about half of ours?
Yeah. Well, it can be difficult to justify, you know, some significant investments based solely on flow reduction and having to treat less flow at the treatment plant, but if you've got sewers that are, you know, near collapsed, crushed, broken, you know, and really should be replaced or rehabilitated anyway, and those happen to be in the same areas that are your leakiest basins, which, you know, if you think about if there are gaping holes in pipes that may allow more INI, so they're not completely independent, when you consider that dual benefit, then the cost-effective portion can go up quite a bit, because you're not just investing in INI, you're investing in a basic, you know, viability of an important city service. As you go through this process, and this is a long-term program, I mean, this is something that cities work on virtually forever, you know, analogous to painting the Golden Gate Bridge, by the time you're done, you're starting over again. So you want to do some measurement along the way and document the results so that you can modify your own program, determine, you know, are you investing the right amount of money? And then through that process, you also, because again, it is a long-term program and it can involve significant investments, you know, inform the community and, so that there's understanding of the need and the benefit, so that you can earn their support. So we completed the sanitary sewer master plan for you in 2014, and one of the steps was to quantify the INI, how much of it have you got in your system. We looked at all of the different basins and sub-basins in the city for the sanitary system, and we found peak flows compared to average dry day flows ranging from three times to up to 13 times higher. Three times is pretty darn good, you're not going to ever do too much better than that, even in a brand-new system. Four to five is not at all unusual. When we're talking about eight, 10, 13, those are basins that really would be in the cost-effective range to deal with. We also made a recommendation based on some pretty broad assumptions at that time of what the ongoing annual funding level would be to replace your entire system at the rate of 1% per year, assuming that it's going to last 100 years by the time you get to the last 1%. That's at the $2.3 million level. The lower level closer to a million is based more on our current understanding of the condition of the worst lines in the city. There needs to be quite a bit more work, and I know that the city has recently gotten some sewer TV equipment and is in the process of trying to document the structural condition of the rest of the system. We recommended developing that private property INI policy, and I know that that's on the list for Public Works Department, and we prioritized the, again, the leakiest basins for some further field investigation.
So, John, don't, we've separated our wastewater and our sewer pipes.
So sewer and stormwater?
Just sewer, stormwater.
Yeah, they're separate, and we're not treating stormwater, correct? So that just continues out to the river.
Correct, yep, and there are some portions in, a few locations in town where there is only a single system, but generally, yes, correct, separated system, and you're still getting these kinds of numbers, which I have to say again, is not particularly unusual for a city in Western Oregon or Washington of the city's age.
So are we that concerned about infiltration on the stormwater? I see how we would be for the sewer part of it. So are you talking about both or just the sanitary?
Just the sanitary, yeah.
Okay, got it.
Okay. And then we, so we prioritize basins for further investigations, which generally is TV inspection and smoke testing, as Ryan will describe, to identify where those direct inflow sources are that can be really cost-effectively eliminated, so we'll give you a brief update on those. So we'll give you a brief update on those efforts.
Any other questions? All right. I'm going to talk a little bit about the sanitary master plan, the results of that, and what that led to with additional metering and smoke testing. These are kind of the seven tenants of INI reduction program that were outlined in the sanitary master plan. The first four were completed as part of the master plan, and I want to highlight the flow monitoring and then the ranking of basins according to their peak INI rates. So this next graphic, this is included in the sanitary master plan, and highlighting the rust area, that's where we're seeing the highest rates of INI. So fifty percent of the INI is occurring in that area, and that is the area that was separated in the eighties and nineties. So that's roughly a third of the city. So the master plan looked at the entire city, and we'll talk a little bit more later about that red area, that rust-colored area.
So I'm curious, Ryan, it does, this seems to be kind of the newer part of the city here, yet we're still have, we have one of the next highest INI rates there.
Well, yeah, the reason for that, there's some speculation, and I'll get into the results of our analysis. The laterals from your storm and sanitary system, the private laterals, it's kind of unknown how those were handled, and so there may be some direct connections as a result of that separation that occurred.
Yeah. So you're saying that, say, roof drains are connected to the sanitary system before they hit the street?
Yeah. They don't hit the street.
Well, I mean, so they're coming into the san, they're coming into the sanitary pipe that's going into the main, to the main and the street versus draining off some other way?
Right.
Okay.
Right. So the result of that was a more focused flow monitoring and smoke testing. So we looked at just the area that was highlighted in red, and the rest of the city we haven't looked at yet. So eleven higher-resolution flow monitoring locations were identified, and these are the green dots that you see. And the areas in the southern portion were done because there were some unrelated issues there that were, wanted to be investigated by the city. So these were monitored for one winter to determine where within this area are there, are the highest rates of INI. So we're kind of further kind of chasing that infiltration INI and where are the hotspots? Where are they occurring the most? So here you see the ranking of those basins based on the prioritization and the peak INI rates. So again, we're necking down further, so now we're at forty-nine percent of these basins.
So you're saying one, two, and three are the worst?
Yeah.
Well, that's a big surprise. I mean, they're the oldest.
They are. Well, they're the oldest, but they were separated in the eighties and nineties, so the infrastructure isn't as old as the basins are. So the result of that was, okay, now we know where the highest rates of INI are based on our flow monitoring. Smoke testing gives us a little bit more pinpoint. Where are we seeing actual roof drains that are connected to the sanitary system? Smoke testing is not a hundred percent, but it does give us more information to kind of further that knowledge base so that when we do act, we act with intention and using resources in the best way. This is a graphic showing smoke testing. Essentially, smoke is forced down into the pipes, and they're plugged at either end. Smoke pops out essentially wherever there's a crack, a direct connection. Those roof drains, those are, so we kind of saw all of these here in Oregon City, but this is, I just wanted you to have an understanding of what this is.
That's helpful.
So here are the results, and we don't need to get into the details, but I do want to highlight, there's, there were a hundred and seven instances of smoking in those eleven basins, and eighteen of those were public crossconnections. Roughly eighty of them were contributing to, by private downspouts, laterals, kind of what John was talking about. Fifty percent of your INI is going to be from private, and then ten of them were miscellaneous that were kind of, we weren't able to categorize. These are those instances shown graphically. So the public crossconnections are the red dots, and the private commercial connections are the blue dots.
What's a, what's a private, are you talking about like just a business that's sending its downspouts into the sanitary system?
Yeah.
Well, the downspouts are shown separately. This is the area drains, right?
Uh, yeah, the commercial. Yeah. So there's a few area drains that are directly connected.
So you're talking about like parking lots?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, that's bad. Okay.
So, what's next? We didn't complete all of the smoke testing. There were some areas that, along Seventh and Mulala, that still need to be, to be tested. Dye testing to, that's another form that we can do to really determine if there are direct connections. So you put that into a catch basin, look downstream in the manhole. If you see the color, then, okay, it really is a direct connection, and we can fix that. The TV investigations that John talked about to, again, just gather more information so that when we do act, we understand if we fix this stick-up pipe, we know that, well, there's, it's contributing to INI, it's in one of the basins that are critical, but it also has some defects, so we can kind of double-dip there. And then disconnect the direct connections. That's really, that's kind of the low-hanging fruit where we can make some big impacts rather quickly and relatively inexpensively.
So for, let's, let's take a typical homeowner who has two or three downspouts on a house. I don't know what the average is, but it's, you know, something like that. They're all connected together and then go into the sanitary system. How, generally speaking, what would it cost to fix one of those? Are you talking $5,000?
I think, generally speaking, in that ballpark.
Okay.
Yeah. And it kind of depends on where you would allow them to put the, you know, if you have, if that home sits above the street and there's curb and gutter and there's storm drains in the street, then, you know, potentially they could be allowed to pipe it to the gutter and away it goes. If there is no storm drainage in the street, or if the property sits down below the street, now we're talking about having to come up with alternatives for where they would discharge.
And what is an alternative?
Well, there may be a natural drainage course that could be allowable. There's the potential for dry wells, although in clay soil, dry wells don't necessarily work too well.
Right.
There'd be the potential for, you know, building a storm drain if there's a need for one anyway, and that's part of, you know, the work that Ryan is leading on your stormwater master plan.
Okay.
So those are the things that would be considered.
Also, just disconnecting it. You know, the city of Portland has tried that with success, and Oregon City's a little bit different geologically, so we have to be careful.
So you're saying disconnect it and just discharge it onto the lawn or the grass or whatever?
Exactly. Splash block, you know, where there are basements, that can be a little bit more of a challenge, so.
Okay.
Just to put into context the results of that smoke testing, I'd say, overall, it's kind of unremarkable. We did not find, you know, the silver bullet Oregon City's INI problems through that smoke testing. And correcting the defects that we did find, while it's an important first step, is really the tip of the iceberg and is not likely to result in major reduction in the city's peak wet weather flows.
So I also just wanted to put this graphic up for some of the next steps, and that is the TVing of your sanitary system. John talked about, you know, kind of replacing your system and understanding where you need to replace your, the pipes, and this is the best way to understand that. And typically, this is done on a rotating every ten years, you TV your entire system. And so that needs to be a priority, and I know that the city has purchased a truck and is moving forward with that, so that's great. Additional next steps to make change in this is to disconnect those public crossconnections. The master plan does have a new stormwater system planned for the Harding neighborhood. Those are currently directly connected to the sanitary system. As John mentioned, developing policy for the downspouts and determining how those are going to be handled and whether or not they're going to be handled, and then continuing with the CCTV inspections and condition assessment.
John, where is the Harding neighborhood? I've never heard that term used.
It's in Rivercrest. It's up above one of our moratorium areas up here off of Lynn, so my recollect of that particular problem is.
North or south of Rivercrest Park?
It would be between here and Rivercrest Park.
So.
Yeah, I guess that would be on the.
It's north, yeah.
Northwest.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
So then, in the future, as projects start to come online and you kind of want to measure, are we having success with this? And so that would entail additional flow monitoring, calibration of the model that was built as part of the sanitary master plan, analyzing that, and kind of adjusting the approach based on those results. Maybe we don't attack the private laterals and we find out that that's really a major contributor, and so that needs to be an adjustment in the approach that we take.
And part of this measurement decision that we'll be talking with John and John about is, how much do you want to document your own specific case study versus applying the lessons learned from other cities? So, for example, the decision about whether to deal with private property or not, you know, for some cities, they've wanted us to do a pilot project where we rehabilitate or replace the mains only, and in another basin, the laterals only, and in a third basin, both of them. And the results of those kinds of studies show that, you know, you get about twenty to twenty-five percent INI reduction, thank you, for addressing mains. If you do the mains and laterals but only in the right of way, maybe you double that reduction, but if you do the mains and the laterals all the way to the buildings, then you can get up to, you know, two-thirds or even higher INI reduction. Obviously costly propositions when you're talking about thousands of laterals and, you know, a hundred and fifty miles of sewer.
Okay.
All right. Got a couple more slides. This is just kind of to reiterate, this is a long-term investment. It's not just, let's do this project and then we can wash our hands of it. It's ongoing, it's cyclical, and so it's an investment in the assets that the city owns and an important one. So to summarize the next steps, complete the smoke testing, verify those public crossconnections, develop and implement those projects, continue to capture CCTV and develop a list of projects that are, result from that, the TV inspections, and along with that will become the private lateral connection policy, and that will inform the nature of those projects. And then, as I mentioned, regularly evaluate how we're doing.
Okay.
That's it.
Questions?
John, have we used our TV truck yet?
Yeah, I was just going to tell you, so our new TV truck is moving, and we've got a couple of folks that are real, were really excited about that TV van, so if they've had a chance to bend your ear, they probably have already, but.
Yes, he has. Out in front of my house.
They were probably out in front of your house, right, Brian? They, in June, they hit 4.2 miles of video inspection for that month, which is phenomenal. And, you know, in the same time, they're getting trained on the van and learning how to use the new software. So they're, they're going, and July, they're making gains similar to that, so, yeah, it's a good pro, and they're following kind of the direction that we've got from Brennan Caldwell on where to go with that, so.
So as far as the private connections, could we develop a policy where, at the time of sale, if we know for a fact there is a connection like that, that could be mitigated at the point of sale?
A lot of cities do that, and so that does have some potential for it.
Because that really kind of, you know, it sort of splits the cost between the buyer and the seller, or however they want to work it out, but it becomes a much smaller piece than handing somebody a five or a $6,000 bill that's outside their mortgage.
One thing that I, so I agree, that's, the idea of having a contractor on-site to deal with those as through, by way of a city contract whereby we could get, you know, twenty of them done on one particular block that needed to be done, and if they don't need to be done, we wouldn't touch them, has its advantages too, right? So there's some cost advantages by having the contractor there to do that work at that time, you know? So those are, those are policy issues we need to bring to you, and we're asking Brennan Caldwell. I know you guys had some slides, you guys probably cut those slides out, right, to talk about some of those issues. But, you know, how do we move that conversation forward? At your level, we're probably going to bring to you some recommendations really as to, we think, you know, do we disconnect roof drains when we know of them? I think we should. You know, how much do we, you know, like the city of Portland, they've done some incentives to, they've helped pay for some of those kind of roof drain disconnects. Sewer laterals that we just know are pretty much swiss cheese, you know, at that point in time. It'd be nice to have a program, a lot of agencies like Clean Water Services, you know, they've got the contractor there to do the main lines, he runs a lateral camera up there, he tells them, hey, this one's bad, needs to be replaced, and there's a program for replacement. And just, it's how to fund that. That's the big deal.
See, there he comes, asking for money again.
Yeah.
Just to add on to John's kind of economy of scale point that he's making about having a contractor take out, you know, a block at a time, what that also gives you the opportunity to do is to have specialty contractors that would do trenchless rehab or replacement rather than just a conventional open-cut dig and replace. You're not going to get a trenchless contractor to mobilize for an individual property for anything that's, you know, affordable.
Are we talking about inserting a sleeve, or are you talking about actually running a new, like a horizontal bore?
Yeah, well, so horizontal boring is not generally done for new service laterals or replacement. It's a cured-in-place pipe, CIPP, which is kind of the flexible sleeve that's then cured by hot water. That's one alternative. Pipe bursting is the other alternative where you're actually pulling a bursting head through the existing line, and behind that is a new high-density polyethylene pipe.
Okay. Any else? All right. Thanks for, Mr. Turner.
You bet. Thank you.
Jim, did you have questions? I can tell you're itching.
Okay, kids. That's enough. Did you have anything, Mr. Mayor?
Just one thing, did you want to talk at all about the Oregon Mayors Consortium tonight, or did you want to wait till Wednesday, the renewal?
Oh, let's, I'd rather have.
With everybody?
Is Frank going to be here Wednesday? I know.
My understanding is that he is.
Not going to be here all, so let's just talk about that real quick on.
That's the only note that I had.
All right. Oh, one thing I did want to mention to you guys anyway, at the Oregon Mayor's Conference is coming up at the end of the month, and one of the things that we do is we, we're supposed to do, is take a gift basket worth at least $25 down there, and it gets auctioned off, and then those all go to the local, the host mayor's charity of his choice. So if you could reach out to the OCBA and the other organizations, I'll talk to the chamber, and we can see if we can get something put together in ten days or so.
Okay.
So if you could reach out to the OCBA and the other organizations, I'll talk to the chamber and we can see if we can get something put together in 10 days or so.
Okay.
Other than that, then we're adjourned.